Twenty-fourth meeting of the City of Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome you all here today. Ask that you please consult the instructions on the second page of our agenda item for our policy. This time, we'd certainly ask you to mute or turn off any cell phones, pagers, or -- does anybody carry a pager anymore? Maybe we should just say iPhone, cellphone, any electronic devices that might make any noise, if you could do that. James Williams still has a pager, the last one up on the city. Or Nick Gales, excuse me. At any rate, if you could mute those. Ask that if you wish to address us on any particular item, that will call your name, and if you haven't filled out one of these forms and provided those to our assistants up front, we'd appreciate you doing that, and identify the item that you'd like to speak on. Ask you to restrict your comments to matters that have not previously been addressed by another speaker, and keep your items brief, and direct those comments to the commission and not to the applicant or other protestors. I don't think there's anything else, Russell. Let's move ahead. We'll move to approval of the minutes for February 10.
Move approval.
Second.
I'll abstain from that vote, as I was not present, so motion to approve the minutes February 10. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
Item three is continuance request. We have one uncontested request for continuance. Item 10, I would like to request that we continue that until April the 28th, rather than March the 24th.
Any questions, any comments with respect to the continuance as read? Motion?
Move approval of the continuance as read into the record.
Second.
Motion for the continuance. Cast your votes. That is continued to April 28. Are there any additional requests for continuance, or new requests that are not part of the agenda today? All right, seeing none, move on.
In the public hearing section, there are no items on consent document, items requiring separate vote. Item one is SP 430, an application by Sam Gresham for a special permit for a warehouse for the Goodwill Donation Center in the DBD District at 520 North Hudson Avenue and Ward Six.
My name is Sam Gresham, 400 Northwest 23rd. I'm the architect for Goodwill on this project. We're here to apply for a special use permit for a distribution and processing center, Goodwill Donation Center on this site. I'd like to introduce Heather Rennenbaum, CEO of Goodwill Industries, to speak.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon. I am going to just give you a little brief history of Goodwill, and then we'll talk about this project. Now, if we can -- there we go. Goodwill has been operating this community for 75 years, operating to advance our mission, which is to bring quality of life to individuals with disabilities and disadvantages through the power of work. We've been operating to enhance this mission and bring it to others under daily public scrutiny. Goodwill is an institution that makes promises and then keeps them. We have a couple of photographs for you here, and some more recent history about Goodwill. In 2008, we changed our business model in donated goods to include what we call attended donation centers. And these centers are, as the name implies, staffed seven days a week, with a couple of examples up there for you of clean, tidy, well-maintained, and secured attended donation centers. We have 10 of these in our territory right now. Now, in 2008, through these centers and at our stores, we received about approximately 92,000 donations. In 2011, we expect nearly 300,000 donations coming to approximately 10 million pounds of goods. With the case in hand, 520 North Hudson, let's talk about it for just a minute. This is just another example of Goodwill doing what we do, which is, we create value through repurposing. Goodwill will repurpose this site. And certainly, when we look at this picture of 520 North Hudson, I think what most individuals would see is a long vacant, derelict, underutilized, dark, unattractive, unsecure site. But that is not what Goodwill sees here. What Goodwill sees is a perfectly suited location and building for a drive-through donation site, convenient for downtown workers and downtown dwellers. So the next picture shows you what Goodwill sees on this site. This is the future for 520 North Hudson. And it is the future because Goodwill is not only willing, but able, to invest over $100,000 in the renovation of this property. And that renovation is going to include a general updating. We will repair the canopy. We will apply fresh, bright paint, new lighting. We will add more greenery to this site to define it, and as well, we will top that all off by adding a new architectural column, which will define this corner and define that site. We have the resources to repurpose this site and to run it in a secure and convenient fashion for the full term of this lease. And how will we run it? How will we use it? This is a flow diagram of how donors will utilize this site. Vehicles, individual vehicles driving south on Hudson Avenue, will enter the property from the west. They will drive up to a set of west-facing overhead doors. The door will open, the vehicle will drive in. The door will close behind them. A polite, informed attendant will approach the vehicle and remove all of the donated goods, any of the recyclables, from the donor's vehicle, thank them, and then the east-facing doors will open, and the vehicle will depart. It will depart via Northwest Fifth Street. That set of activities will happen from -- all during the daytime hours, so from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. We will have donation attendants there. In the off-hours, we will have a security guard sighted at this facility, and it will be that guard's responsibility to maintain this site, to bring in anything that might be dropped off in off-hours. So that gives you just a little bit of an idea of the facts of our use of this site. Let me just briefly highlight a couple of things in the frequently asked questions list. Again, how will we prevent this from becoming a dumping ground? This seems to be a big concern for the protestors. We will not only have this staffed by knowledgeable attendants from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturdays, and on Sundays. We will have no dumping signs prominently displayed, security cameras around the property, as we do with all of our properties. As well, here, we will have a security guard posted at this site for all the hours of the week that we do not have an attendant in place. We think that not only enhances our business model, but enhances the security of this street corner in a way that it is not right now. The question is being asked, why this location? Your answer is there in terms of its appropriateness for our business model. I hope I have also described for you how the unique configuration of this site allows us to serve donors inside this building, and still have them access and egress very easily from the site. It is unique in that capacity. I've talked about the improvements to the sites. So the last question there is, will there be a lot of truck noise and increased truck traffic? The answer is no. Goodwill uses only 16 to 24-foot trucks. For pickups from our centers, there will be one pickup per day from this center, unless volume dictates otherwise, and then there will be two in non-rush hour times. There will never be garbage trucks, which can be noisy, or semi-trailer trucks on this site. Never. We do expect approximately 20 to 25 donor vehicles per day. All of those will be individual-use vehicles. And as well, we've been asked the question, will there be noisy equipment in the site? Will we be crushing, and baling, and things like that? The answer, again, is no. There will be no heavy equipment inside this site at all. Everything will be transported to our centralized warehouse for further processing. So our last picture here gets to the heart of this matter. Here at 520 North Hudson, not only will we be adding to the appearance of this corner, adding to the security of this corner, providing convenience for downtown workers and dwellers in terms of donations and recycling, but we will create jobs here, and we will train people to work in the growing green industry. Our purpose is found here, in the heart of the matter, creating jobs and training people. And at this juncture, I conclude my statements. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Rennenbaum. Commissioner, before she steps away and we move to the protestors, I wonder if you had any questions specific to the Goodwill use and operation, before maybe Mr. Gresham's, any of his comments, et cetera? So, open that up.
I'll wait until after I hear the protestors.
You want to hear the protestors first? Okay. Sounds good. Do you have anything else, Mr. Gresham, at this point? All right. We have several people signed up to speak with respect to this matter. First up would be Troy Arnold. Mr. Arnold, would you come up, please? Would you give us your name, address, and some of you, it looks like you live in Omaha, Nebraska, so some of you, perhaps your relation to the subject property?
Sure.
Thank you.
Troy Arnold, 10703 J Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am Regional Vice President for DEI Communities, the owner-operator Regency Tower.
Okay.
Just to give you a little bit of idea about DEI, we are based in Omaha, Nebraska. We own 39 communities in Midwestern states. We currently own four in Oklahoma City, with two in the downtown area, one being Regency Tower, the second being Deep Deuce at Bricktown. In June of last year, we purchased Regency Tower for a little over $17 million, and we are currently in the process of a $1 million renovation project to help enhance the property. Our goal is to make it more attractive to not only potential residents, but also to add value to the area that it's located in, Northwest Fifth Street, in Oklahoma City. We wanted to create a place where people would wait, or want to live in downtown Oklahoma City, close to employment, also the urban lifestyle and the urban environment. And in accordance with this, and some of the improvements we have seen, we have worked closely with Oklahoma City with Project 180, which just completed that section in front of our building. This was a five-month process that disrupted our business. We willingly allowed it to do so. We experienced a 3% drop in occupancy as a result. However, we were willing to do that because of the inherent improvements that came along with that, and we felt that coincided well with what we wanted to do with Regency Tower. Now, because of this, we are a little bit concerned, as we have mentioned in the letter that I provided, we are concerned with a donation center that may distract from this goal, and is also inconsistent with many of the changes that we see happening in the area, to improve that as a quality-of-life style place. Now, with this saying, we do appreciate what Goodwill's mission is. We have no problems with Goodwill's mission. We appreciate the work that they do, and the effort that they put into this. However, we are concerned that the execution will not be as planned. We are experienced in that area over the last few months. We have seen some of the challenges in that area, and our concern is what has been laid out will not be able to be implemented as has been planned, and could be a distraction or a harm to the area. We are concerned also, they mentioned with the $100,000 being invested, we're familiar with this building as well, that this is not enough to be invested to improve the current site. And while they're looking to add security, and we appreciate the addition of a security guard, we have a controlled-access building. We still experience challenges. We still experience challenges and watching that. We have only one entrance, where their site has multiple locations. We still have challenges trying to keep track of what's going on around our property, and making sure that it is secured or controlled for our residents. One of their description statements mentions this site will house off-site intake for the Job Connection Center, which is a free, no fee, no appointment job search assistance site. This is concerning to us as well. We're concerned about a potential increase in transient foot traffic in that area. We already have issues there, as the bus station is kitty-corner from Regency Tower. We have challenges with transient foot traffic. We have our residents that are questioned daily for money, or for food, or for different items. Anything that would potentially bring an increase in that causes us concern for the resident's quality of lifestyle. With DEI's investment into Regency Tower, we want this area to look nice. We want it to be a great place to live. We want to provide a place where residents can come and live in downtown, and feel that this is a destination property, and we want to make sure that everything in that area is consistent with that goal as well. And our concern on this is this is not inconsistent with our vision for what we -- with our investment, what we wanted to do, and anything that would detract from that, or possibly reduce our investment value, is a concern for us and our owners. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Arnold?
Just wanted you to make a comment that you're concerned that the execution will not be as planned.
Correct.
I don't know what part of that execution you're referring to, so if you could help with that a little bit. And also, in the context, that what's before us is a request for a special permit.
Right.
There are requirements in this, that if the execution is not as planned, the permit can be revoked.
Okay.
So, can you?
Sure. They talked about, like, what to protect, potentially restrict dumping, or after-hours dumping. That is a fairly large site, when you look at it, the back area, and I know they have mentioned security cameras, those type of things. Once again, we have experience with this. We have security cameras. We have 24-hour concierge service that watches this. It is still difficult to monitor everything that goes on on your property at this time. Any dumping that could take place, any risk of that is a concern for us. Also--
Do you have an onsite security guard?
We have a concierge, which is our staff that sits in our front lobby and watches what's going on on the property. And so it is a difficult thing to monitor. We recognize that they are putting an effort into it, but we recognize that there is difficulty around that. We have experienced it. We see the challenges with it, and so our concern is, because of the nature of their site that's even different than ours, with multiple places where things could be dropped off, that it would be hard for them to keep that under control.
Thank you. Mr. Bright, did you have a question? That was it? Any other questions for Mr. Arnold? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sir. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Give us your address and your relation to the property, or your use of the property.
I live at 411 Northwest Fifth, and my office, my law office, is also at the same location.
Okay, thank you.
And I have been living there for five years. Before I moved there, I office across the street at 428 Northwest Fifth, and was there for 10 years. So I'm well acquainted with that address, and also what was there previously, what previous to the bus transfer station. The thing that I have seen is the development of foot traffic and people being attracted to downtown. I've also seen the increase of private investment in the way of homes being built on Northwest Fifth Street, whereas before, it was almost deserted. Northwest Fifth Street was almost deserted at 5:00. The last tenant at 520 Hudson was WorldCom, and they operated an optical fiber contracting firm there. When WorldCom went bust in the, I think, early 2000s, then it has not been rented since. I personally believe that this is not a function of being abandoned, so much as being a function of the owner, the chief properties company, deciding that either renters were not suitable, or the rents being too high for investors to invest something into it, purchase price being probably too high also. I will point out that at Northwest Sixth and Hudson, the Athenian Building has been vacant for as long as, since it was built, and no one has rented that place, and it's a brand-new facility. I don't know the reasons. I'm sure there's some commercial reason why that's going on. But what I can tell you is that I personally invested all the money that I had at the time to buy the location where I'm at. I put my home there to increase my efficiency, and I happened to get into what was the idea of living downtown, before it really became fashionable to do so. There are a lot of folks now talking about living downtown. I'm concerned about the issues brought up here, that there would be a recycling center. Why a recycling center instead of a distribution center? You would say, well, the permit application is for, to amend or change, the downtown business district zoning. The zoning prohibits recycling centers. And so the board here has before it an application to bend the rules, bend the zoning rules, to allow recycling to take place. Recycling being corrugated cardboard, metal, various plastics, broken glass, and other types of recycling materials. This is the point of the zoning application. It is the use which the city is being asked to allow. This use encompasses a heavy industrial use, not the limited applications that Goodwill is telling us about, but when you say a recycling center, it is a full-blown industrial operation, and the law allows that. Now, I don't know if the board can craft a permit that only allows the Goodwill Industries to do what they're asking for in the permit, but it's my understanding that they want a use to allow recycling, and that's what the deal is. Not distribution, it's not a Goodwill store. This is a center where they will have industrial application, albeit on a small scale, limited to, I don't know how big the lot is, I suspect it's somewhere around 10,000 square feet or so, but all the things accompanying recycling, all the nuisance things associated with recycling, will be allowed by the permit. I think, I object personally, because I have my home there, and I didn't bargain for a recycling center being next to my substantial private investment. I'm sure that the people at the Regency Tower didn't bargain for a recycling center being across the street from their substantial investment, and it's my understanding that every private owner within 500 feet to 1,000 feet has objected to this. There may be some private owners blocks away who, well, we don't see it, we're not next to it, it's going on over there, and they don't object. But I think you will see that all of the private owners here will say they don't want a recycling center next to them. Now, if you were to say that the downtown business district does allow small shops, small businesses, gas stations, things of this nature to exist, well, yes, it does. It does not allow a recycling center. And I believe that the city, through purchased the Goodwill Industries Center, which was on Hudson, south of I-40, at a tremendous cost, because it didn't fit in with the city's vision of what should be south of I-40, and I think it's on Third Street and Hudson. That place is closed. I'm sure that Goodwill Industries made a profit. They are a nonprofit, but they're a $2.2 billion charity. They're not an unsophisticated mom-and-pop operation. And when they're talking about 10 million pounds of recyclables, it's going somewhere, and I'm afraid that there will be mishandling, and that this is not the sort of thing envisioned for a beautiful downtown, light business, residential sort of environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robles. Any questions for Mr. Robles? Commissioner? Thank you. Rick Dowell. Mr. Dowell, would you come up, please? Give us your name again, please. You've been here before.
Okay, my name is Rick Dowell. I'm here today in the capacity as president of the Park Plaza Redevelopment Corporation. And my assistant here is going to bring up some slides for you. Okay, first of all, just so you know, the organization I'm representing, which you may not be familiar with, I'm going to bring up slide number seven, which shows the current Park Plaza District. I guess that shows up on your screens. This district has been in place, at least in conceptual framework, for about a year. We formed a formal organization about seven or eight months ago. We elected board members and have a membership. Currently, our membership of the Park Plaza District, just to give you an idea how much of the property owners in the area we represent, if you could bring up slide eight. Our current membership consists of, as you can see, 73% of the private property owners by value in this area, our current dues-paying members. It represents 70.17% of the property owners in the area, in the Park Plaza District by area. We also have started to recruit a lot of the nonprofit organizations, the ones that have joined so far, the St. Joseph's Church, the United States Post Office, and the bombing memorial. And we're working on getting more membership in that area as well. The next thing we come to is the idea of protest. You received a letter, I presume, before the meeting that was canceled last month, which outlined our reasons for opposing this. Our board voted unanimously, after considerable time and effort researching all the possibilities of what this thing could look like, what it could do for the area, and by unanimous decision, they voted to oppose the rezoning in this particular area. The property owners that protest in the area right now, within 300 feet of private property owners, is well over half. The only person that is supporting this, is a private property owner within 300 feet, is the applicant. So we're 50, we're over 50% opposed, 7% for. If you look at the entire Park Plaza District, I haven't found, other than the applicant, one single property owner that's in favor of this. So with this, it's my duty, as a president of this organization, to illustrate to you why it is we're having a problem. Now, first of all, I'm going to say this, the problem that we're having is not with Goodwill Industries, and I can speak for myself personally. My family in Muskogee, Oklahoma, ran the fundraiser for Muskogee County for 25 years for this particular organization, probably raising millions of dollars. So I believe in what this organization does, there's no question of that. I think all of us do. It's just where should they be doing it? I mean, there are all kinds of things that we need, and there are all kinds of organizations that have useful purposes that we need to support, but the question is, where should they be? I'm going to say another thing. I'm also a believer in private property rights. If someone owns a piece of private property, and everything they're doing on that private property is lawful, and doesn't require rezoning, then I think it's for the rest of us, if you don't like what they're doing, you need to buy the property. But in the case where a rezoning is required, or in this-- But in the case where a rezoning is required, or in this case, something which alters the right of the property owner, unfortunately, it not only alters the right of the property owner, but it can alter, and in this case, it definitely does alter, the rights of adjoining property owners. So we come to the next question, well, why is the fuss? We have got nine property owners that have sent protest letters to you. We've got, in addition to that, we've got seven businesses, some of them quite substantial, that have sent protest letters to you. And they've had months to debate the pros and cons of whether we should support this or not. So the next thing I come to is, well, why are people opposed to it? And having talked to probably 50 people, and having spent an hour and a half with the applicant, that is, the Goodwill Industries people, and looking at the way their process operates, and I'm quite familiar with it, the thing that comes to mind is the following, and I think this kind of sums it up. If you take the area of Coors Shore, which is a real priority to the city of Oklahoma City for redevelopment, what's one of the first things they did? They said, "We want to get rid of low-value business because what we have in mind is a more high-valued use." So what we have here is an up-zoning, not a down-zoning. But here we have an area, the Park Plaza district, and let me tell you what the people in the Park Plaza district, the business owners and the property owners, have in common. This was the area, most of which was damaged in the bombing in April of 1995. The area was completely devastated. Most businesses just folded up their tent and went away. And let me give you, so what has happened over the last 15 years is, a lot of this property has changed hands because some people just gave up and left, and new owners have decided to upgrade the property and see if we can realize a value in that area, which, by the way, is directly adjacent to the central business district. It's juxtaposed in between the central business district and Heritage Hills, one of the nicest residential areas in the city of Oklahoma City. So it's an area we certainly want to develop in a proper way. Now, I want to show you just some examples, and I just took this out of our archives, and I'm sure that other property owners here, if they had time, could do the same thing. I'd like to show you slide three. Okay, look at slide three. Now, you see that garage on the left? That was the way that garage looked in 1995. Eighty people that were customers in that garage were killed in the bombing. The revenue from that garage fell through the floor. Our company purchased the garage shortly after the bombing. And if you look on the right there, you'll see the improvements that our company made to that. And by the way, we had no city money whatsoever to do that. That facade you're looking at there is actually built on a revocable permit on city property. And we did that because there was a perceived shortage of parking in the downtown area, and that was the only private parking garage available, and our company spent $350,000 doing nothing but putting the facade in front of that building, which, by the way, is directly across the street from the bombing memorial. And the only thing we got from the city was a $50,000 loan at 5% interest payable in two years.
Mr. Dowell.
Yes.
Due respect, and not to diminish in any capacity your efforts in the area, because we're all very well familiar with those. This garage is certainly a substantive example in your other properties at Walker, et cetera. And the fact that we, I think we would all agree, that there's been a significant commitment to private investment in the area. If we could, though, I'd like to stay focused on the Goodwill application, other than that I would agree is that we would all stipulate to the fact that you and others, Mr. Robles and others, have made significant investment into the area. So if we could...
Commissioner, I'll keep it really brief.
Thank you.
The reason I'm addressing this is I need to refute the idea, first of all, on the part of the applicant, that here you have a derelict building, so we're making it look better than it did before. And what I'm trying to show you is we have, virtually every building in the area is derelict, and the people that have taken this property over haven't just spent $100,000, they've spent, in some cases, millions of dollars with properties no bigger than this one. And when you see the improvements that have been made in the area, what should be happening there is something far more substantial than what's being proposed by the applicant. Now, I'm just going to be really quick, so you get an idea, because some of you may not be as familiar with the area as others. Just look at lot four, for example, page four, I'm going to go real fast here. Okay, there's before, there's after. That's almost a $6 million expenditure on a building that was vacant for 10 years. Look at five. Okay, now, I'm going to bring this because this is directly relevant to the applicant. Now, if you look at the way that looks at the top, I was given an offer by the state transportation department to use that building to repair state vehicles, in other words, bulldozers. And I could have received a rent that was similar to what these people are getting. But instead, I chose the high road. I made a substantial investment in that building and put somewhere over greens much more value to the area. And given the proximity of the Park Plaza district to downtown, that's the way the value should be achieved. Now, let's go back to...
Specific application would be helpful, if we could go back to the application.
Okay, yeah, so we're getting back to the fuss of the applicants. But what I'm trying to get through is the history of the area. When you really look at it, it's going from low-value use to high-value use. The payroll that we had in our area was zero in 1999, it's $16.5 million right now. The use that you see in the area is office use and apartment use at a high-rent area. What you don't, if you go to slide one, you'll see what a typical, you'll see what a typical Goodwill outfit looks like. And by the way, these are photographs that I got from the applicant. Now, look at the way that looks. Now, look at that and compare that to slide two, which is a typical property that surrounds their proposed site. There's a total incongruity there. That's why the downtown design review committee recommended against approving this by a five-to-nil vote, because it's just totally incongruous. The highest and best use of that lot, and we're talking about the block that the applicant's site sits on, that entire square block, the only building of substantial value on that block is St. Joseph's Church. 80% of that block is just parking lot, buildings that really need to have some work done on them. If I were looking at this as what would raise the value of the area, it would be a shopping center, something that would raise tax revenue for the city. The bombing memorial, from what I've been told, is the highest visited site in the city. It has more visitors than any other agenda in the city of Oklahoma City. And yet, there is no place within walking distance of that memorial that you can buy anything or get anything to eat, unless you walk five or six blocks. So the highest and best use of that area is restaurants, shopping, things that will complement the bombing memorial, and other businesses in the area. If you downgrade the zoning and you put something that's a low-value use, which is what a recycling center is, that's why they're normally in industrial zoning, because it's a low-value use. You're going to discourage people that own the other property on that block from making an investment that is clearly not complementary to a low-value use. And since that's really the only block that could be developed to develop retail in the Park Plaza district without tearing down a major building, it's going to really be a major setback to the entire area. And I see a glaring inconsistency between down-zoning in an area that with private funds we're trying to do something with, and yet up-zoning in an area where a lot of public funds are involved. Now, with respect to, is there an alternative for this outfit? If there were no other place for them to go?
Wait, Mr. Dowell, if I could, I certainly understand your group has a view about alternatives. But Goodwill has not brought us an alternative site today. So they've brought us this site, and we'd like to make a decision with respect of this particular site. Once again, I don't find your choice of an alternative site for Goodwill to be germane to the application, to interrupt you, quite frankly, to be germane to the application that we have before us today.
Well, I helped raise $2 million for them, so I do think I know something about the nature of the organization, but I...
Due respect to what you did in Muskogee, we are once again here on a specific application in Oklahoma City.
Okay, sir, well, I will give you, and just summarize, unless anyone has any questions. As a former professor of economics, I would just say this, if I were putting a dollar value, I would say that the value of the real estate in the Park Plaza district, if you rezon this, is going to decline about $4 million. And if you want me to give you the details, I'd be glad to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Dowell? Okay. Mr. Warren, would you come up, please?
Thank you very much. My name is Joe Warren. I own property at 428 and 430 Northwest Fifth Street, which is a little less than a block west of the property subject to this application. You know, I agree with Mr. Dowell, Goodwill is a wonderful organization. My objection here is that their proposed location is terrible for what they want to do. I agree with most of the points that have been made regarding the character of the neighborhood and the effect on property values, but so moving just to some other odds and ends that haven't been discussed, you know, there has been, by the applicant, a recognition that they would anticipate property being dumped after hours at this location, with the comment that their onsite security people would then haul it into the building. I would like just to point out that under this permit that's being granted, there is no requirement for 24-hour, 24/7 after-hours security. In fact, that was not even part of the original plan that's been proposed as a result of the protests that have been raised. So there's no guarantee that that would continue into the future. I would also, I was also taken aback somewhat by the description of a recycling and distribution center. I assume that implies that this use could be expanded in the future, if the applicant so desired, into a full-blown, not only a recycling and trash reception center, but into a Goodwill distribution outlet. I would also point out that, you know, one of the recyclable trash items that they are going to be soliciting is styrofoam. That's a, they have no experience handling that product in the past, that's a new product for them. I'd just like to point out, in my experience, you know, styrofoam is a terrible product to handle in terms of containing it. You get the little styrofoam peanuts, packing peanuts, they blow everywhere. The other typical use are the large molded packing pieces, which get broken, and you get small little pieces of styrofoam. Every time you pick up and move one of those, it distributes that around the neighborhood. I don't think they can contain it, despite their best intentions. I would also just like to comment, they say, you know, they're saying they expect 20, 25 deliveries a day, but at the same time, they expect over 10 centers. They expect this year to have 300,000 deliveries of over 10 million pounds of disposed-of goods. That would be, just on the average, 30,000 per center and a million pounds, which would come, seem to me, to come to close to 100 a day, as opposed to the 20 a day that have been mentioned. You know, finally, the applicant had indicated that this recycling center will define that intersection. And I don't disagree with that. I think it very well may define that intersection. I think that's what most of the property owners and business owners in the area are concerned about. We don't think that's an appropriate definition for an intersection in inner city and an area that, as has been pointed out, has enjoyed more and more vibrant influx of private investment, possibly, than any other of the areas downtown. So I hope that we maintain the zoning and the zoning, current zoning restrictions and deny this special use permit. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Warren? Marva Ellard, would you come up, please?
I'm Marva Ellard. I live at 1521 North Chertel, one of the owners and developers of the Seber Hotel at 1305 North Hudson. But the reason I'm here is we have a property under contract at 711 North Hudson, which some of you all might remember is home to Allen Cafe for years and years. We're hoping to redevelop that into a residential use and build some new single-family homes in that location also. And the reason I wanted to speak with you is because, to me, we have to decide what we're wanting to foster downtown in that area at this time. And it would be difficult, I think, to ask people to pay $400,000 for a place to live if there's a recycling center a block away. As everyone has said, it's nothing against Goodwill, but I think it's the use of the area and what we want that area to be. Many of you probably know this, but there's a large recycling center in the 1400 block of West Main that we use a lot. It's called Green Star. That's probably nine, 10 blocks from the proposed site. Once you have your things in the car or the truck, I don't see that it's that big a problem to drive a few extra blocks to take it someplace. And it's not an objection to Goodwill or their mission or their use, it's mainly, what is the proper use and what do we want to foster in that part of town at this moment in time? That's it.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Brief. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Ellard? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rinebaum, Mr. Gresham, would you want to... Let's, I think first I'd like to just talk about a couple of things that are, I think, fundamental to the application. One is the staff recommendation, and I'm sure that most of the commission's recommendation, at least in my view, is with respect to the 24/7 or non-operating hours...
Yes.
...security. That is agreed, correct?
Yes.
So the site would be staffed 24/7, 365?
Yes.
Is that right?
It would be, yes, it would be.
Okay. Now, I think the operations with respect of the use are fundamental. Mr. Robles' distinction on that particular point was not necessarily lost on me. The implication that you're operating, quote, "a recycling center," or that the permit that we're granting would be for the operating of a recycling center, while not your vision, potentially, might be somebody else's vision. I think this is also, Mr. Dowell and Mr. Warren, I think, shared that concern. And that being that, you're not operating machinery, but I want to be, I don't think that anybody wants a, regardless of your view on the application, would want a, quote, "recycling center" that operated recycling equipment, metal, anything like that. And I know that's not your intention, so is that the view? Commissioner Goss?
Mike, you're hitting on something that...
I think our application may kind of drop there.
Well, I don't know about the application, because obviously, we don't have it, but our staff report...
Right.
...gives me pause in several areas, and, you know, I'll direct your attention to page five, section C6. It sets out the requirements for, or standards for a special permit, but then, number six says, "The city council may impose specific conditions such as..." One of them is a requirement of all machinery and facilities be located within the enclosed building.
Right.
Well, does our permit say there will be no machinery?
Exactly.
And equipment? Does our permit restrict it to just a collection site?
Right.
They're not addressed in our staff report. Those give me, those give me pause. The other concern I have about the application, just in general, is it comes forth in broad terms, and I think a couple of protesters hit on it, to allow what appears to be more than just a collection site. I don't see that it's restricted to that. The other thing in here, there's no request or discussion from the applicant as far as any other restrictions, or a time restriction, or an expiration date on the permit. I would like to see all of those refined, at least in my mind.
Well, a couple of things, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out, on page four, item number one, it says, "If the cameras indicate..." indicate a problem, that they would have 24-hour security."
Right.
From 6:00 PM until 7:00 AM. And then, a couple of things. The applicant mentioned that there would be no heavy trucks on the site. Did I misunderstand you in your presentation?
What we will use on the site for collection is a 16- to 26-ton truck. There will be no garbage trucks, you know, the ones with the overarm or overhead workings. There will be no semi-trailer trucks-
Okay.
...on the site.
And I've got a question of our staff. Will, will that building be required to be sprinkled? Will there be fire suppression?
I don't have any ideas. Sam, may I be able to answer that?
No fire suppression? And the next thing I'd like to know, I'd like to know what you're going to do to this building for $100,000, you know, and I'd like a specific list of what you're going to do and how it's going to look when it's completed. And, you know, when I, when I thought, when I see Goodwill, I think about people bringing clothes and shoes and like that, and you giving it or selling it and so on and so forth. That's not exactly what this is. This is a recycling of newspaper, styrofoam, as was mentioned. Kind of elaborate on that just a little bit.
Is that all right with everyone if I elaborate on that particular question?
No, no.
Okay, thank you. And this particular center will be a combination. Certainly, individual donors will bring to the center those bags and boxes of gently-used household items that we will then containerize in the center, and those containers will go onto a truck, and the goods will go to a Goodwill store for sale. Also in this center, that same donor, if they so wish, will be able to bring their household recyclables as well. So they'll have a couple of bags of household goods and perhaps a box of cardboard that they would bring to us. Those materials, again, will go into containers that are covered, and those containers will go onto the truck and bring those to our centralized warehouse where they will be baled and handled and prepared for, for sale.
Just so I'm clear, just if I could-
Go ahead.
So, the, I agree, one, that there's, we do, we are suffering from a bit of lack of specificity with respect to the application as to the actual functions that will take place here. So when it says that at 6A machinery will be located within an enclosed building, what machinery specifically are you contemplating? This goes further directly to Mr. Robles' point.
Yeah.
What machinery are you contemplating here? I have a view, your picture shows somebody merely lifting a-
A box, a box.
Box of-
Yeah.
Milk cartons out of the back of a trunk, but-
The machinery-
There's a concern legitimately about a larger-scale-
Sure.
...operation. And I don't know that that's what you're contemplating, but I think we want to be clear on what you're contemplating.
Absolutely. And the machinery that we refer to here would be that machinery that would assist in placing these containers into the back of the truck. So what we contemplate there are pallet jacks. That's the machinery that we talk about there. And that would be, that would be it. Chris, is that correct? Just looking to my VP Operations, and yes, that would be our machinery in the-
So you wouldn't have forklifts, compressing shredders, any of that type of equipment, other than an office shredder?
Yeah, and even that might not be-
JJ?
I might help just a little bit. The application, as we saw, when we visited with Goodwill, is we considered this a warehouse. Goods come in, they're put in boxes, they're stored for a while-
Right.
-go out to an end location. So we don't classify it as a recycling center. When the new zoning ordinance was adopted, or the new downtown business district was adopted, it classified all warehouses as special permits. So that's why you're seeing it, is warehouses used to be permitted in downtown, but when we drafted the new zoning ordinance, we decided those might need a second look for new warehouses. So basically, you have a special permit for, for a warehouse. It's a typical Goodwill donation center that happens to take in some recyclables, and everything that comes in, if it is recyclable, it goes to, from here to a recycle center, where they're crushed and shredded and-
Yes.
And-
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Commissioner Bright, please.
When I first looked at the application, I think it was when you presented it a few weeks ago, and then continued it, I thought, well, what's wrong with this? But then hearing the protesters that came up, you know, and then all of a sudden, my ears perked up, machinery, crushing, recycling, with all the things, tin cans, glass bottles, et cetera, styrofoam flying all over the place, and you're doing this and packaging it and sending it out, was not my understanding of this special permit application. It was a, as JJ just said-
Yeah.
-it's a warehousing thing. I don't know, I didn't, I haven't seen the language of this special permit. I mean, we just had the staff analysis, and I don't know what it says. I would like to see it say, or see my staff report say what it is that you intend to do. I see recycling, I see machinery, I see all these things. I mean, it, so, you know, your antenna rises. In deference to the neighbors, I wouldn't want to have the thing, you know, crushing glass and smashing cans and, and doing all this anyway. But that's why I say I didn't see anything wrong with this-
Right.
-because you're improving the appearance of the property.
Yes.
And I do have two comments about that. And if we weren't talking about what you're going to do, I'd talk about what it's going to look like, because what it's going to look like is very important. And the rendering that I saw when you do the facade and you do the column, the sign is way too big. And I think that that's really kind of what one of the protesters said about the, you don't need that sign downtown. Flat don't need it. It's intrusive, it's way too big. I'd like to see something else much more, I don't know-
Understood.
-compatible with the area. And also, I don't know what you can do on the north side of the building with the streetscape or whatever, the Project 180 funds that were on Fifth Street. I don't know what's on the north side. But if you could plant some trees between your building and Regency Tower, perhaps on Harvey, if there's a place to put some street trees, we can do that.
Yeah.
What?
I think there's a-
180 is just to address that.
Why?
Project 180 is just to address that.
That's what it does.
There's new streets, well, there's new trees-
So you'll, you'll have trees there, right?
Already there.
Okay, well, I didn't know, but that's-
There are some that are already planted new.
But it's the signage, the color of the facade you're going to do, I don't know what all those things are. But everything else, if it was as, it was understood by me, what you're going to do, I really don't agree that it will be a downgrading of anything. It's across the street from an municipal bus transit place, and, and I think that if anybody's, you know, addressing this as being, it's a homeless shelter, I mean, I, you know, it's not that at all. I don't see that that's it at all. It's people driving up, putting their stuff in there, driving off, no manufacturing, no land, you know, no loud noises, et cetera. But I'd like to see the special, you know, I think it needs to be really defined exactly, because, this is my point, a special permit can be revoked if you don't do what it says you're going to-
Yes.
-going to do.
Yes.
Well, I think that, as we've indicated, and certainly the concern expressed by some of the protesters has been perhaps a lack of specificity with respect to the operations that are to occur there.
Yes.
And because, to an extent, I agree with JJ, this is a warehouse, but I don't know that we specifically have that comfort with, in regard to the application that's in front of us.
Well, and two, you know, like the drop-off, we operate a pretty good-sized benevolence at our church. And our church sits off of Cedar Road about, probably 150 yards.
Right.
We have gates that are locked. We have cameras. We still have people stopping at the gate, walking all the way up to the church, and dumping stuff off. You know, if you don't have somebody there 24/7, that's going to happen. I don't care where you are. And that's one of the things I want to see that's agreed to-
Yes.
-before I even, you know, go any further with this thing.
Exactly.
And another thing, I'd like to know what kind of materials you're going to use, what you're going to do to the facade, what you're going to do to the face of the building, and so on and so forth, in materials, not just a picture.
This is a stucco facade. It's allowed in Downtown Design District. It's, this actually was drawn for a contractor originally, the plans, and he bid this job, to apply stucco to the exterior of this building. The existing facade, as you can see, which is dilapidated, sinking, wooden, metal panels is replaced with this metal and stuccoed facade. The sign size could be reduced. I'm sure there's a limit on size, and this may overscale this quite a bit.
Can we see, can we see with that, I haven't seen that.
And, I mean, I'm even talking about maybe just a logo.
Oh, just, oh, yeah.
I mean, not, not a sign that says, you know, "Distribution, recycling."
Yeah.
That's kind of, you know-
Get anything.
Be a good neighbor. Everybody knows the logo. Everybody that's going to be around would know where you drop it off. You don't need to have a big giant sign, just very subtle.
Yes.
Anyway-
Yeah.
Okay. I think we need to-
Yeah.
-figure out what you guys want to do.
Well, I-
Could I ask you anything?
Mr. Chairman, I've sat and listened, and I've reviewed what I have before me, and, and I have, I'm just, it's very much in line with everyone that's saying, it's kind of, it's kind of hedging between distribution and drop-off and donations, and it's not real clear. I'm just going to piggyback off what, what I've heard. But then also, when I look at it in context of what we're trying to accomplish in the development of the downtown area, and where we're trying to go, to me, I'm not just convinced that it's a compatible use for this particular operation within the downtown area. And that's just based on the information I have and what I've seen and what I've heard. I'm just not convinced of that personally, you know.
Could I, would you mind if I respond?
No, please. Go ahead.
Just to say that I think that there has been a lot of additional and sort of, almost like doomsday information that's bubbled up on this, that the, the basic use of this center would continue to be, for the life of the lease, a collection warehouse function, which would be cleared out every day. So a truck would come every day to clear materials, all materials, off to centralized processing for us. So it would continue to be as it was described originally. However, Goodwill would welcome those additional definitions and restrictions in a more defined special use permit.
Okay.
And we, we just, in terms of the signage, we're, we have, we have knowledge of what that sign can be and as well should be. And just to say that we are very aware of the neighborhood that we would be moving into. We've had several discussions with the neighboring users, the memorial, the church, the Downtown OKC Committee, and all of these individuals that we've spoken to are not in opposition to this.
Then, is this a suggestion? I think Commissioner Gales?
Mr. Chairman, we've gone around 360 degrees a couple of times. For me to support this application, you know, I'm, I'm torn from a standpoint that, as described, if we have a good-looking facility-
Right.
-a drive-in one side, everything's done inside, nothing comes outside, and it leaves, and it's restricted to that, I don't know that I have a problem with that.
Right.
The difficulty I'm having with this application and what was just said by the applicant, the basic use will be this.
Yes.
Well, that suggests to me there are other uses. And without having the specifics set out in the permit, I don't think I can just broad-brush that. I'd like to see it continued if we're going to go forward with it, or today, I can't support it in its present form, because frankly, I don't know the present, the specifics of the present form. And then the other thing that I find a little troublesome is the true warehouse use as described, again, I don't have a problem with. I'm assuming, and that's a big assumption, that the Downtown Design Review Committee probably doesn't have a, a problem with that use, because it's-
Right.
-it's in there. But if we continue this, and if this is refined to a point where the specifics are really set out, it may be prudent to run it back by the Downtown Design Review Committee for a second look. I don't know that it would change their mind. I don't know what their rationale was, but I am cognizant of the, their recommendation to us for denial.
Now, I don't think that the, I'm getting some, I, I think that it is not to us versus, or we look at the downtown design.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that as a requirement. I'm saying I, I would like to continue it in a-
Two weeks? First meeting in March?
Finish your application? Yes.
Okay. Is there motion? I, I think you understand the goal here.
Yeah, because what we would be looking for is that additional specificity-
Exactly.
-in the special use permit. So that would be the purpose of the continuous.
Exactly.
And one of the things, I think, to emphasize, Commissioner Gales' point, was that we don't want to hear the word, "Basically, that's what we're going to be doing."
Yeah.
My, my apologies. I hail from a different part of the world, where we use "basically" a lot. Every one of our sites operates on this same business model and goes off to the centralized warehouse. So that centralized warehouse serves 30 different sites.
Okay.
And, you know, Commissioner Allen has brought up the security. I believe that's addressed in our technical evaluation, one, that it'll be 24 hours. But while you're tweaking it, you could get it in there in black and white, so there wouldn't be that technical evaluation in the staff report.
And what it looks like, sign.
Okay. March 10, is that sufficient time? Okay, so motion, second to continue this matter to the March 10 meeting. Cast your votes. It's continued. Thank you all for coming down. Mr. Dowell, Warren, and Robles, thank you. Mr. Dow, Warren, and Robles, thank you.
Got a call.
Let's go.
All right, item two is PC 10273, which is an application by Thompson Building Company to rezone 101 Northeast 24th Street from C3 Community Commercial to I2 Modern Industrial in Ward 7.
The applicant present on item two?
My name's Don Faulkner. I'm with Wigan Properties. I represent the owner, Thompson Building Company. This is a building that was built approximately in 1981. It's a cement block warehouse, right in the middle of an industrial area, and for some reason, it is Zone C3. We have a contract with a potential buyer that wants to be sure that he's operating in accordance with the proper zoning, and we've requested that it be rezoned to I2, as most of the other properties are in the vicinity.
Commissioners, nobody's signed up. Do you have any questions for Mr. Faulkner?
If there's no protests, as I move approval of the application.
Second. Motion to approve item two. Cast your votes. I think you're approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item three is PUD 1433, an application by Roosevelt and Cynthia Callaway to rezone 3136 North Coltrane from R1 to PUD 1433, Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Brian Coon with Coon Engineering, representing the applicant. And the applicant, Roosevelt and Cynthia Callaway, are here with me today, so if we have any questions for them, we're glad to answer them. The Callaways actually live on this property on the corner there at 31st and Coltrane. Bought this property 15 or 16 years ago, have lived there ever since, and are looking at subdividing it to build some more homes. The lots, as you've seen on your staff report probably, are about double the size of the lots to the north. Will be putting in public streets, water wells, septic tanks, and with the staff report, those several TEs, we agree with all of them, and request your approval.
So Brian, you're going to have water wells, septic tanks, and about three-quarter acre lots?
Yes, sir.
And sprinklers?
And sprinklers for the buildings, yes.
And sprinklers on your lawn, too.
So all the TEs, you're okay with those?
Yes, sir.
Eliminating the city, running the water?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Any other question?
Only thing I'd just like to, I'd like to encourage is that it's a nice wooded lot in any way you can, keep as many of the trees. I mean, I see you've called a lot in the application, but.
Very little grading, very little grading is going to take place on the lots, mostly just the streets.
Okay. With that, I move approval of the application. We don't have any protests.
Motion to second to approve item number three. Cast your votes. That item's approved.
Item four is C6265, which is a preliminary plat of Callaway Cedar Forest Estates, located at the same location, Ward 7.
Again, for the record, Brian Coon with Coon Engineering, representing the applicant. Companion preliminary plat. We are requesting a variance on TE number three. Peachtree Avenue, which is to our south, is not a through street. It's not, wasn't ever paved, probably will never be paved. Those lots are sold. So we don't, we're requesting that we don't have to stub into it, because it will never go anywhere, so.
Everybody signed up for this?
I agree with, agree with all the other TEs.
Agree with the TEs, okay. variance TE 3.
I move approval of the variance on TE number three.
Second. Motion to second to approve variance to TE 3. Cast your votes. It's approved.
I move approval of the application.
Motion to approve item.
Second.
Four. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
It's approved. Thank you.
Item five is PUD SP 1369A, an application by Johnson and Associates for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1369 at 1,000 East Britton Road, Ward 7.
Commissioners, this packet of the Cobalt Associates, excuse me, Cobalt Assets LLC office building was laid on the horse shoe, so that's Tim's exhibit to this application, as I understand.
I don't know if the staff, staff provided it. Thank you. For the record, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. This is the, this development was done a number of years ago, and right at the wrong time. So this is the first office that's being constructed since they completed the paving probably a year and a half or so ago, so. And as the staff identified, it's in conformance with the pad. Just for your information, it's a residential style. These are the elevations. It's a color rendering up there, if you can see that. But it's a, it's a single standalone building that, we did a lot split to bring the lot closer here, and then as we go with the next buildings, we'll adjust depending on how the size of the buildings go for this. But this backs up to the lake that is on the west side of this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Johnson, nobody's signed up on this?
I have one question, and it relates to the staff report. I don't see a detail on the signs. What signs are going to be used on this piece of property?
Well, this particular piece of property is, the sign will be just whatever standard signage is on the building. There's no.
No extraneous sign?
No.
None of those?
No, and that'll be a separate application for the main drive entries at some point in time, but it'll be limited to what was approved.
That comes in later.
That's correct.
Okay.
In the original PUD, what were the provisions for signs?
I think they were 30-foot pole signs. Just kidding. They were.
They're 140.
They were ground mounted.
Yeah, I thought that was, I thought it was.
Commissioners, nobody's signed up. Any further questions?
I move approval of the application. I submit it.
Thank you. Motion to second to approve item number five. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
That item's approved. Thank you.
Item number six is SPUD 599, an application by Camden Park Mini-Stores to rezone 1400 Northwest 164th Street from PUD 1364 on R1 to SPUD 599 in Ward 8.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Tim Hughes, who's the developer of this mini-storage. We were here two weeks ago, and the commission had requested continuance for a couple items. First, Mr. Hughes had a discussion with the neighbors who had previously submitted a letter that indicated that there was some confusion whether or not they thought Mr. Hughes owned the property to the east, that's the vacant R1 tract, and they submitted a letter yesterday that I believe you have in your packet, that the lady states that she does in fact know that Mr. Hughes doesn't own that property. Her concern is just that the R1 property to the east of the subject tract remains single-family and doesn't get zoned to multifamily. So if she doesn't oppose our mini-storage, she just wants to make sure that the R1 to the east, I think in the letter she said she has the utmost confidence that this commission will take care to make sure that that doesn't happen. The other item this commission wanted to see were the renderings of the units south of the northernmost building, and we also provided in your packet, it's one of the two loose leaf items, that shows if you're driving from the west, what you're going to see. On that picture, you're going to see a black wall, that is the wall of the OGN substation, and then the beige wall that, as you can see, you won't be able to see the back buildings except for the roof. The only building you're going to see on the miniStorage is the front building being the northernmost building on this tract. And on that building, we have this rendering to show what it'll be, and this will be made of stucco, have a very nice gate. And in the staff report, TE number six talks about the facade and no metal building. It's, it's our request that the requirement for the no-metal buildings be, not have to, we don't have to do that for everything south of that northern building, because you can't see it from either direction. This is the view coming from the east, and it's the same thing. You can see the northernmost building, which looks, will look exactly like that, but you can't see the southern buildings. The loose leaf that you have shows all you can see are the rooftops. There are five other technical evaluations that we are in agreement with, including the number five. We took out the EMD display for the signage, and with that, I would ask for your approval.
I'm sorry, just to clarify your comment with, on TE number five?
Number, number six.
Six, excuse me.
Number six, there are seven paragraphs, paragraph starting with facade.
Right.
We would ask that the buildings other than the northernmost building be allowed to be metal, for the simple reason that no one will ever see those buildings from the street. The only way you'd see those is if you were actually inside the miniStorage facility. They're doing an eight-foot wall, masonry wall around the entire perimeter of the tract, as well as the landscaping buffer to alleviate any fear of being able to see it from the street.
An eight-foot wall around everything?
Except for the area that.
That's what I thought. And that's a, what, a five-foot, six-foot masonry wall?
I think they'd be.
Around the, around the electrical substation. That's not an eight-foot wall.
The, the loose, the first one you have, this loose leaf, shows what it looks like right now.
I understand, and I can see a metal building. I mean, you can see it.
Which building?
Well, I mean, if you, here's the, here's the metal part that peaks above the wall.
That was a mishap on Photoshop? That light colored is actually.
Is that the metal building?
The white.
On top of that part is, but it's not the exact color that you're.
But, but the point is, is that from that perspective, you have, you don't have an eight-foot wall.
No.
You just don't, you know, on that side. And the concern is, is that it's a metal building, and I think that's why the staff is saying, do something, at least on that side. At least on that side. You do, you don't, you do whatever materials they're recommending, stucco or EIFS material, whatever, on that side. Or you have, you don't have an eight-foot wall.
And he's willing to do an eight-foot wall to extend to encompass the entire tract, except for obviously the frontage.
Can you put bricks on top of that wall around?
On top of the substation wall?
Uh huh.
Well, we could do it on our property. I mean, butt that substation wall and just make it eight foot to be in conformance with the remainder of the.
And what would that be, what would that wall look like? I mean, what's it made of? Is it wood?
There will not.
Masonry?
I'm seeing me blocked with.
Well, in that case, I mean, then it covers it. I mean, you're right, it does.
We'll make it so that you're at the straight 164th.
But what about the pitch of the roof? What, what's your comment on the roof pitch? That's an also TE number six.
Yeah, and we are, we're in agreement with, I broke it, TE number six in the paragraph, so paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 we just discussed, and 7, so pitch of the roof we're in agreement with.
Well, if I understand what you, what you just said, you agree with all of TE 6 except for the, the metal, the part, the paragraph of facade, and you're going to mitigate that by having an eight-foot wall all the way?
Yes, sir.
So would that be an additional TE, or would that just be basically there we described the screening?
Well, it could be a, I think I'll add it. Just an amendment or.
Yeah. At. Yeah, I think you ought to, it ought to be a. An amendment.
I think you could delete, 1, 2, delete paragraphs 5 and 6 and just adopt their exhibit as a exhibit in the PUD.
We had to revise that they build the eight-foot wall.
But this exhibit don't show the eight-foot.
That doesn't show an eight-foot wall.
This exhibit don't show an eight-foot wall.
We invited to add the eight-foot wall.
They've agreed to amend the, to.
We will amend the pad and reflect.
Oh, okay.
The concerns that.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or comments on this action?
We'll approve what the additioners outlined, that wall will be as eight-foot as shown in the rendering.
Second. Motion to second to approve item number six as conditioned. Cast your votes. Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I see that we have with us this afternoon Mr. Elliott, and I was thinking that perhaps if he would like to set himself a true design conundrum, he should take on the design of a miniStorage facility that would look like something other than a miniStorage facility, and would be one that we could all point to as our new gold standard for miniStorage facilities.
Go ahead.
I don't know if we'll be able to afford that.
I don't think we can.
Item 7 is C6266, final plat of Silverhawk Phase 2, Ward 8.
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Billen with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. This is the second and final section of the Silverhawk edition. We have three TEs which we're in agreement with, and you'll notice on TE number three that we are requesting a variance in order to eliminate the street stub to the south. The purpose of that request is DCP Midstream actually owns the entire quarter section to the south, and they own and have for a long time and operate a, a large compressor, compressor boost station there for their oil and gas operations. So not only that, but they've also been in communication with my client, and they specifically are opposed to and would like for us to delete that stub. So that's the purpose of our request for that variance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, nobody's signed up with respect to this application. Do have variance to TE number three.
We have variance on TE 3.
Motion to approve variance to TE 3. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Move the application.
Motion to approve the application. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall.
Item 8 is SPUD 601, an application by Dean Dyess to rezone 10330 North Hudson Avenue from R1 to SPUD 601 in Ward 2.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Dean Dyess with Commercial Permits Express to present this application. We agree with the staff report, and would like to move forward.
Commissioners, is there anybody here on this application? Nobody's signed up. Any questions for Mr. Dyess?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second to approve item number 8. Cast your votes. That item is approved.
Thank you.
Item 9 is PUD 1426, an application by Chesapeake Land Company to rezone 742 Northwest 63rd Street from several different zoning districts to PUD 1426 in Ward 2.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Dennis Fox and Tim Johnson. We also have Dan Ladan, of course, on behalf of Chesapeake. We've got Rand Elliott and Bill Yen. So we wanted to bring everybody here to answer whatever questions you all might have. Although I will tell you, this PUD, we have attempted to mirror the PUD that's directly to the west, so this is our east campus PUD. With regard to Chesapeake, we have coordinated with your staff. With regard to this, I know Mr. Johnson has spent a lot of time talking to Commissioner Powers, and if there's any questions, we want to respond to them. But in regard to some of the issues that have been raised, I want to make sure we kind of explain what we're doing and why we're coming before you with this PUD. Number one, the PUD will allow for flexibility in regard to the building of office complexes with regard to commercial activities. Also, if, if we look at the map that's behind you all, as you can see, Lee really is kind of the center point of this PUD. East of Lee, to the railroad tracks, will be the area that we call our service area, and that service area will provide for the needs that you would have as a large campus. Those needs being, you know, needs for any kind of mowing, any kind of servicing, lighting, everything that might go on. We'll also have record storage and some other things. But east of Lee is where you're going to have the service uses. So with regard to this PUD, we have attempted to mirror the PUD to the west, and Chesapeake... So with regard to this PUD, we have attempted to mirror the PUD to the west, and Chesapeake thinks that we have provided for a mechanism which will allow for flexibility. Your staff has come back and dealt with several TEs, and in regard to those technical evaluations, I can tell you that we can agree, although in working with Mr. Chambliss, we have a few that we would like to talk to you about modifications that the staff is okay with. In regard to that, number one, we on use 8300.45, that could be a CNG station, gas station. We need that in both Trax One and Two. But the other uses under TE One, we can agree those will be east of Lee. With regard to TE Two, we can agree that all of those will be east of Lee. We're okay with Three, we're okay with Four. In regard to Five, the staff, I think, in connection with signage, has looked at your policy and just said, you know, "We are going to put in what your policy provides," and that's eight feet in height and hundred square feet. That's inconsistent with 1195, which is to the west, and that allows for 10 feet and 125 square feet. Now, we're okay with 10 feet and 125 square feet, but I want to make sure the Commission understands that when Elliott might come up with an identification sign that is 12 feet or 14 feet, and if we do, we understand we'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment. But we're willing to live with 10 feet and 125 square feet. If you all have a question about that, and if you recall on Class and Curve, there was a series of questions that came about in regard to signage, and I think anybody who's driven by Class and Curve would agree that the vision that Rand had in regard to signage came about. I think the signs that were provided on Class and Curve are as we told you when we appeared before you at the Planning Commission. Here, Rand has some examples, if you want to see them, that we need a little flexibility. We would like 10 feet. Now, keep in mind, these signs are typically going to be identification signs for the buildings. So if somebody's going to a building, then they need that identification to be able to know which building they're going to. With regard to Six, we're okay with, and with regard to Seven, we're okay with. This being a PUD, we will have to come back before you with a specific site plan on any of our buildings, or any of the specifics, so you all have protection. Not that you need it with Chesapeake in regard to what they've developed in this city. I think this city is proud of Chesapeake, and I think Chesapeake has done an excellent job, and this is just a continuation to allow them to further their campus. So we're here to answer any questions, and Commissioner Powers, I'm thinking you might have one.
I do, I actually have a number of questions and points that I want to discuss with you. But just with respect to the TEs, we had talked about the outdoor sales and display and storage really is about storage and not outdoor sales and-
That is correct.
And so we're going to write that in and-
Yes. And I think that's a discussion you had with Mr. Johnson, correct?
And then, do I understand that with respect to Tract One, the above-ground flammable liquid storage has to do with sort of a smaller-scale tank, for lack of a better term, that will be located in the far eastern edge, and its location will be specified? If not at the moment, then when they do the site plan, the more specific?
It will be east of Lee, and when we identify exactly where it is, we'll come back with a specific plan.
The gasoline sales, even the restricted gasoline sales, that's just Tract Two?
Could be Tract One or Two.
Okay. Did we decide that, that it is Tract One or Two? Okay.
The other uses will be east of Lee, but that is a use that might be on either one of the tracks.
Okay. As Mr. Fox indicated, I did spend some time, although not as much time as I would have liked to, quite honestly, walking through some of the aspects of this. I had concerns about the communications antennas and towers. I understand that's all going to be rooftop stuff, it's not going to be ground level?
No. When you and Mr. Johnson talked, he was not in the impression that it would be just on the buildings. Chesapeake would like the flexibility to, if they can combine all their users, they would like to combine them onto a pole, knowing that we would have to come back and get your approval on a plan. But whether that happens or not, we don't know, but that is something we would like the flexibility to appear before you in the future on.
Okay. And then we had talked also about the elimination of the fast-food drive-through order window use unit as part of the Tract One uses.
And that one, you know, in 10 years, if Rand Elliott can take a lantern and make it look like the signage we have on Class and Curve, I'm not so sure that we wouldn't like to leave it in, knowing that we'd have to come up with some design that you all were comfortable with, and might have a unique and a nice look in the future. Do we have immediate plans to do that? No. But-
The issue for that with me is, because, you know, we're talking about some fairly significant chunks of land here, whereas it might be perfectly all right to put that kind of a use along 63rd Street, or along what's going to be the newly-redeveloped Chertel Boulevard, which is a whole nother thing that we probably need to talk about a little bit. That's one thing, but, you know, to see something like that in the interior, I just don't, I'm having a problem. I don't know whether you want to go into that kind of detail to narrow down. It could go here, it doesn't go there.
I just spoke with Mr. Ladon, he said he'd be okay to limit it to the two areas you just talked about, and that being 63rd or Chertel.
Okay. Well, that's good for the application. I'm not sure I'm crazy about the idea of it being on Chertel, but at least that narrows it down. Okay.
Dennis? Oh, go ahead, are you still, keep going.
Shall I? We did spend some time talking about the fact that really this application envisions a complete sort of redevelopment of this area, including the expansion, is maybe not even quite enough of a word, along Chertel. The conversion of Chertel into a sort of a major thoroughfare. I mean, it'll have its own, as it's envisioned anyway, its own commercial district, it'll have commercial frontage along Chertel that'll go through this area. You know, one of the things that's always, we go to these meetings with developers, and we're always telling them, "If it was only you guys, you know, we wouldn't have to be doing this." And that's always true, of course, with Chesapeake as well. If it were, if we didn't have to think about anything other than the fact that they were going to do this for themselves, and for their own employees, and for their own benefit, we probably wouldn't have to do these reviews, because they always turn out top-quality product. It always looks good, it always functions well, and if it doesn't, then they change it so that it does. You know, they make it work, they make it work for their employees. But what they're really contemplating here is something a little different. Once it's done, Chertel will be, again, a major thoroughfare, and it'll have its own commercial frontage. And I have some questions in my mind about whether they're limiting the depth on the east side to 150 feet, but what we're really talking about is sort of stripping out, I'm sorry, I can't help it, Tim, it's just the terminology that leaves mine, you know, the Chertel frontage. And I think we need to talk about a little bit, just as a Commission, whether we think that's a good idea or not. We're not talking about commercial uses that are limited to the 63rd Street frontage, you know, and to an area that already has commercial development. We're really talking about bringing that commercial development down Chertel and through this area. And that is going to be commercial development that will be open to the public, it's not just for their own employee usage.
Well, it's open to the public, but if I'm understanding what you're saying, Janice, that you're concerned about what I'll call the interior or the core part of Chertel, not out on 63rd and places like that. And I guess my question would be, if you propose some obnoxious commercial use in there, whether they would or not, it's not the point, but let's assume they did. Who is damaged by that, other than Chesapeake, and certainly the driving public going by, if it's that unsightly or whatever? But I guess I have a little difficulty understanding, with the degree of quality that they put in everything else, why we should be overly concerned about what's in the core. We've addressed the, quote, "commercial areas," the "commercial corners," that sort of thing. I just can't see picking the block where the fitness center is, for example. I just can't see some terribly obnoxious use there. I can't see how it could happen, why they would let it happen.
I think you've articulated our response better than I could. I would add to that, that in addition to that, we wouldn't do anything to, as you said, negatively impact all the property that we have surrounding the use, but we have to come back before you all in regard to specific site plan review. So you have the chance to look at it and make sure you all are comfortable with it.
Dennis, when I read the application, this is appropriate to what Janice and what Nick is talking about, and all of these uses, but then, when I read, after you delineate the uses, which is one of which is fast-food or drive-through order windows, 8.1.2, for example, and then the other one is also appropriate on Tract Two. Accessory uses within this tract include but are not limited to, then you have the litany of things. The rules of statutory construction, when you say include but not limited to, it includes all of these, and they're only for the use of Chesapeake employees. My assumption is, the PUD that you've drafted, and this is your language, when I read this, I thought, well, all of these are going to be for the use of Chesapeake's employees, and no third-party customer is going to come in. Is that the way that this is construed?
No.
Then what's the purpose of 8.1.2?
Well, let's just read it here, Mr. Bright.
Those are with respect to your accessory uses.
Yeah, that's just the accessory.
That's what?
What, 8.1.2, that, yeah, that would be Chesapeake employees, but that's different than what Commissioner Powers is talking about, which is Chertel, which would have commercial-
No, 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 I understand.
8.1.2, yes, but that doesn't go to the question that she raised, which is a good question, I think we've got a better answer for, but that's in regard to 8300, which has 29 uses, and 8.2.1, which has 20 uses, so.
And the same language is there with 8.2.1?
No.
Yeah.
No. If you deal with 8.11, 8.1, which deals with Tract One and Tract Two, it is not limited to only Chesapeake employees.
Okay, I'm going to read it.
8.2.2. Accessory uses within Trax Two include but are not limited to these things. That means that whatever I'm reading up here is for Chesapeake employees. Okay, but you're telling me that the accessory uses. The point I was making was, if you look at Tract One and Tract Two-
Well-
There are a number of uses, 29 in Tract One and 20 in Tract Two, and those don't have those limitations.
So that doesn't relate to all the uses that you've delineated? So all of those are available for everybody?
Could be, yeah.
Like along Chertel, Chertel is going to be a major-
Which is my concern with Janice's comment, that, you know, things go awry, and then they succeed for generations, but when we do this, when we agree to all of those uses on these properties, it's in the deal, it's with the land, it's what, you know, it's what it is for anybody, not just Chesapeake employees. It's the law.
That, well, and it's also the Commission's prerogative to try to delineate what's appropriate and what's not, and that's what Janice's comment is, on the 150 feet. Now, this is why I thought, well, that applies to all of those uses. I mean, this is my thought. Whatever has been done with the campus, and even with Rand's lord knows what signs you're going to come up with, or the 10-foot, whatever it is, you know, even with that, my assumption was, when I read this, is that all that's just fine because of what kind of development this has proven to be, and what it's going to be. I don't have any problems at all. It's just that I was trying to get my arms around why Tract One up there is C Three, and you have offices, a garden, a data center, landscape, and I see that you can put a drive-in with, you know, order through windows. And I just couldn't, I couldn't get my arms around that, except that I thought the out was, it's just going to be used for Chesapeake people, but it's not. You can do that, you can do whatever you want with that, and I don't think that's appropriate. I think our limit, what you're going to do with the zoning, that what you anticipate is going, this is the planning, that we're, the name of this committee, the Commission is, you know, Planning Commission. This is the plan. The plan is, I'm going to put a garden, and some offices, and a data center. All of those aren't gasoline sales. They're not drinking establishments, they're not, I mean, I think our role is to, if you're going to do it, well, then tell us you're going to do it, but if you're not, don't rezone the, this is what has been bothering me for many, many times on this Commission, is that we rezone something with everything when you're going to have a garden. If you want to do something else, come back and say, "I'd like to have that zone for that truck stop."
Well, okay, if you will go to, and maybe Cindy, you could put up the map.
Yeah.
I understand that this is a Planning Commission, and I understand you're a Planning Commissioner.
I have been.
So let's talk about planning.
Okay.
Now, if we look at this, and if we go to Chertel, let's go up to 63rd Street. What do you have existing just on the east side of Chertel and the south side of 63rd?
You have R1 and I2.
You have, now, I said east, and we're talking to Chertel.
I1 and R1.
You have I2.
Yeah, I see that, no, I see part of that, you know, you've got a lot of stuff there.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with anything. You're not-
It doesn't?
You're not going to do that.
Okay, then take the same-
You want the whole thing. Right to the south is R1.
Yeah, here's my point. My point is, when you come in with a PUD, if we took your approach, it would be the full employment to Dennis Fox Act for the next 10 years. full employment to Dennis Box Act for the next 10 years. And that's not appropriate.
Why?
Because every, the community garden, that might be there for the next 10 years, it might be there for the next 20 years, it might be a better use, consistent with the uses we have here, in the next six months or a year. You all came up with a plan, under PUDs, that required us to come up with a site-specific plan when we change a use. So you have additional control. PUDs weren't designed for one use. PUDs were designed for a multitude of uses.
Well, it depends upon who's speaking about the PUDs. We have had many PUDs that are single-use.
Okay, maybe we need to ask our planners why we have PUDs and what they're designed for. But PUDs around the country and forever have been a compilation of several factors. What uses are appropriate? What design criteria is appropriate? What setback, height, signs, those kinds of things, all of which are in here. And that's why I think your staff recommends approval.
You know, I think, with respect to my particular concerns about the way this is configured, if track two were pushed up to northwest 62nd Street, then that would alleviate most of my concerns. But the problem that I have is that track one, if it's all C3, that is a big chunk of land, and it's awfully deep off of 63rd Street. And we're talking about two full-block depth of C3. I don't think there are any places where, if we were zoning raw land, we would say, that's an appropriate-sized piece of C3 property, which includes quite a few uses. I'm not pushing for anything like a single-use PUD here. But I think if we're going to deal with the property in these large chunks, and we're going to have, you know, base underlying zoning like C3, but includes quite a few uses, that we need to look really carefully at the lines we're drawing there.
Right. And the only rebuttal I'd make to that is, yes, this is 30-plus acres, and as Commissioner Gales said, we own not only the property within what I'm calling Chesapeake East, but we own the property to the west. We have a railroad tract on our very east portion of this site. And as you drive by and see all the developments, what we're trying to provide is flexibility, the design standards that you all can review, and we come back. The reason you don't see this very often is you don't see very many sites within the internal parts of the city that are this large, that a single entity owns, so.
I think that, I'm somewhat, I guess I'm a bit lost in that I don't necessarily, I envision a retail development on track one off of 63rd in this boulevard of Chertel that perhaps is different than what we've got, that we're used to. I don't see a strip center coming up here. And I'm not particularly troubled by the fact that we're going to make this interior tract in this location a C3 tract. I think it's kind of rational, given what I've seen for some of the other planned developments that Chesapeake have done. I look at the curve, I see the vision there and the thought process there. I mean, you know, I've lived in this city for a long time, and if you would have told me that that, I don't know how many acres the curve consisted of, but that would turn out to be that functional step up, if you will, in retail development in this city. You know, I never could have envisioned that even five years ago. And so I think there's an opportunity here to maybe change our paradigm a bit for some of these developments, with respect of how they look and how they function. And I am somewhat persuaded by Mr. Box's statement, that this is a tract of land, that is a large tract of land controlled by a single owner, that's interior to their own specific campus, that is in a location that we otherwise wouldn't find a 30-acre tract of dirt. I think that, I'm not at all troubled by this, and I don't know that I feel the need to see it come back repeatedly at each stage of the development process for the C3 part.
Isn't that what we have, design review?
We have a design review for what we're going to get, building-wise, but I mean, for the zoning, I mean, I have some other questions about the application, but that wasn't necessarily one of mine in particular.
I also have some of the questions. My point in raising this is, I just want us to be aware of what we're doing here. You know, you look at this site plan, and it says office, maintenance, landscape, community garden, data center, and I'm pretty sure that's exactly what they're planning to do in the short term. The long term is, however, that that very large chunk of land is going to be zone C3. And I just want us to be aware of that, and I think it's appropriate for us to discuss whether we think that that is appropriate at this location, and whether bringing it two blocks off of 63rd is an appropriate depth for that zoning. That's all.
And that really is my comment, Will. I have no problem with the 150-foot on Chertel being zone C3. I mean, Commissioner Gales is absolutely right. Do you want to have a really ugly strip shopping center in between the west campus and the east campus? I don't think so. I don't think we would ever want to have that done, period. But it's the magnitude of the C3 zoning that you have in the north portion of this track, when you have a garden, an office, I mean, all that's under O2.
And, let me be clear. I think the question that Janice has raised is a valid one, and I think the answer is, we have control of west and east, and I would disagree, Commissioner Bright, that the zoning map doesn't mean anything. Because if you look back at that zoning map and you go down to 61st Street, there's I2, I2, I1, R1. So, you know, what we've done is try to, you know, come up with a plan, hence, plan year development, that we think will allow flexibility, but you're going to see the same kind of development that Chesapeake's done.
Well, no, and again, don't misunderstand. I think it's going to be wonderful, but my experience over years has been that things go up and things go down. And when they go down, well, then you've got how many acre piece of property that you'd like to do something on that's zoned R1, R1, R1 in a lot of places. That's why you're here with a PUD, because you can't do what you want to do with the R1 zoning as it is right now. And to have that entire two-block, square-block area, the whole thing being zone C3, I think is not appropriate, even though what you're going to do today is okay. I don't know about tomorrow. And I'd like to have the uses limited to something more appropriate. You could have a whole bunch of them, but filling stations, drive-through, da-da-da, I mean, all these things that, you know, essentially all of the C3 uses, with the exception of maybe a hotel or something, but there's not very, there's not very many that have been eliminated. That's my point.
I guess the other piece of that, that I think we need to be aware of and think through, is the fact that they are seeking the ability to put metal buildings on this property east of Lee.
That was my next question.
So.
That would be the service area where you'll have tractors and trucks and storage and all that.
Well, I'm not necessarily particularly, I agree that, I do think Lee does cut the piece of the commercial tract that we've got right there. It's clearly, and I understand the notion with respect of Lee is going to be the service area and where you're going to have a commercial, your service, your own area. The blanket grant with respect of metal buildings east of Lee is a little troublesome for me in this large of an area. That's one of my concerns. So, you know, I don't have a good, I don't feel good about that, especially given the fact that, you know, hopefully Chesapeake's here, they're good citizens, but that's kind of a forever thing that we'd have to deal with. And that worries me, Dennis. Secondly, is this, the telecommunications tower seems to have been somewhat, gee, we thought it was going to be on the building, but now we want a tower. I don't know that I'm in favor of that use, even in this context, in that I would prefer that that use be one that we get another look at versus, instead of can we versus how high? Because the second question is, we've already got the right to put it up, now we're just discussing about how high it is. Is it going to be 50 feet? Is it going to be 100 feet, et cetera? So I don't think that use is necessarily appropriate here. I understand the need for digital communication, you may need antennas on your buildings and things such as that, but I don't, I think we, I would prefer a greater look at that, especially in that particular area.
What if we, what if we further refine that and made that a use that had to be east of Lee? Keeping in mind, when you take Lee, that's going to be our service area on the very east portion of this property, that's where the railroad tracks are. And on the north, where it says auto paint and body, well, that's a metal building with car repair and all. We don't own that. And then you have a wide variety of I1 and I2 zoning districts throughout the area. So would that provide additional comfort?
Well, it doesn't provide me the comfort necessarily that I'm looking for. I don't think that gets there.
This is one of those things that just seems to stretch both ways. It's like either they need this giant chunk of C3 land, or it's going to be a maintenance facility. If it's going to be a maintenance facility, I think we're okay with it being a metal building. But, you know, if it's going to be this giant chunk of C3 land, maybe not so much. I just think this is one of those areas where your desire to maintain flexibility results in a lack of specificity that makes me very uncomfortable.
Let me address the cell phone tower first. Dan Ladonna, Chesapeake Energy. Right now, AT&amp;T is doing a comprehensive study in the area for our campus and our needs. There's currently over 4,000 employees, all of which carry cell phones, BlackBerrys, iPads, that take up a lot of bandwidth. And so AT&amp;T is looking at how can they provide adequate coverage from the railroad track all the way to Western or even Grand Avenue, where our campus extends to. With the addition of some buildings that are coming up, there potentially can be 7,000 to 8,000 employees. So it's very important that we have adequate cellphone coverage. We'll know that probably within the next 30 days on what AT&amp;T's recommendations are in terms of height, location. We don't like to put them on tops of buildings. I think that's not a good use of the visuals there. We feel that if we had a tower in the area somewhere, that it would be decorative, it would be hidden, and you wouldn't even know that it's an actual cellphone tower. In some of your warmer climates, they look like palm trees, and they just blend right in. So I'm very confident that any tower at any height would not be noticeable. In regards to the C3, we don't know exactly what we want to put in there, but we're trying to keep some options open. With 8,000 employees, the density is greater than some of your neighborhoods that surpass a two- or three-mile radius, and the services are needed there. We need little stores and conveniences for the employees so that it's close to us, it's close to campus, it makes their day a little more efficient when they can just run two blocks away and drop off their prescription or pick up their laundry. So we don't know what those needs are today. We're working on those, and we don't know the exact location. Chertel is a great location, a great thoroughfare. If we owned all the neighbors that kind of abut Chertel, we might be coming to you to ask to vacate Chertel, but we can't today. So we're just trying to keep our options open. Not all of those uses will probably be in there, but today, that's how the PUD's written. I can't define it at this moment. We're just asking to, you know, approve our request today as is.
Did you say you had some examples, some signage?
Rand does, yes.
Can we see that, please?
And again, the signage is internal, it's, they're not, you know, billboard signs, they're not LEDs, they're just markers for buildings and locations.
Rand Elliott, Elliott and Associates Architects. What I'm going to share with you, James, is some renderings that we've done that show this. And as Dan said, these are markers. The idea is to be able to share with those people that might be visiting the campus, the difference between the historic campus and the east campus, and then also identification for each building. So we've done what we would call sculptural signage that shares those expectations. If you were to come to the Chesapeake campus, they'd say parking garage three, so that you would be close to visiting someone there. And so that garage might have P3 is all it would have outside. And as you see these, they are really intended to be a sculptural marker.
Oh, I do, I'm sorry.
I didn't assume you were done, Janice.
And I also, I will have a question. I don't want to leave this whole discussion about metal buildings and C3 and all of that just yet, but I do have a question for staff, if I could. And, you know, we're doing these kind of cross parking agreement, not exactly agreements, but, I mean, we're setting this up so that parking can kind of go anywhere on the campus for these uses. And as long as their uses are internal, I totally get that. But if they're going to open the commercial, either on 63rd or down Chertel, to the public, then I have a question about whether there's sufficient parking there to accommodate public use onsite? And if not, how are we going to deal with that?
Now, that's a good question. I think they could put in their PUD that those types of uses would supply onsite parking. I don't think they'd work without onsite parking.
Tim Johnson, Johnson Associates. The things that we discussed on that is that the intent would be for some of the local commercial to allow for some parking, say, off-street parking or adjacent to the building parking, but it would be a limited number of spaces. This campus as a whole is a major attempt to create a walkable area from the southeast corner with all recreational facilities, all the way to Grand Boulevard, where some of their offices are going to extend to, and the Whole Foods, et cetera. So there will be limited public parking, and the anticipation for the commercial use would be, the rest of the users would come from the campus, which are parked in garages. Janice, you asked me a specific question about, well, what if one building sells in the future? I think that's when the cross-access agreements would have to kick in. If for some reason this campus needed to be divided, well, those garages won't go away, and so they'll have to have shared agreements for whoever owns the building.
You know, I think, though, that the experience of the Republic, which I don't know about everybody else, but certainly has taken me by surprise, that the possibility that these uses will become popular, public places, you know, in and of themselves, you know, we wouldn't be having, you know, most of this conversation if all of this were only going to be for Chesapeake employees. They do an extremely good job of providing that access, and it's certainly laudable that they encourage that pedestrian use and so on. And, I mean, that's all great. The issue is, you know, if it's going to be open to the public, is there sufficient parking to accommodate the public?
And Dan just informed me that the intent would be, at any public use, the parking will be sufficient for that public use.
Onsite?
Onsite.
When we say sufficient, are we talking about meeting code?
Meeting code.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ken, while you're there, you're probably, now, as I'm looking at this picture.
Yes, sir.
That top track there is track one, still includes the commercial uses, but it also has in on the diagram that I'm looking at, maintenance, landscape, data center, et cetera, right? And that maintenance landscape center there would yet be east of, quote, Lee. Is that right? Is that when we say east of Lee? So potentially, the way I read the PUD, if I have it right, you could have a metal building east of Lee, abutting 63rd with a metal facade that's out on 63rd. I don't think that's what we want.
That's, we agree. I think that we need to further clarify that the visual aspect off of 63rd Street, the public street portion.
I mean, I don't, I don't think you guys want a metal building facing 63rd, but it doesn't necessarily, that's not abundantly clear in the application.
I understand.
And then, same thing, I guess, back at 57th, well, 57th Street's not really a factor. This, these are not necessarily through streets right here between the garden and the data center, for example, right? Parking in the central plant.
Michael, this one shows, this one shows the ones that have been closed and vacated now.
Yeah, the hatching on the.
Ah, okay, thanks, Janice. Okay. I see. I'm most concerned about those interior buildings because there's no access down through there, and it won't necessarily be a troubling visual.
Yeah. I think your points were taken, and maybe we add an additional TE. We've got the one TE that Commissioner Powers is going to place in here on the parking. If we have a use that is not just for Chesapeake, then we'll meet the parking requirements pursuant to code. And if you look at that map you were talking about, it's platted, so anything north of what's platted is Block 125 on the lots. If we do that, that would get us in a position where it would provide protection for 63rd.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
You know, again, kind of looking at all this together, it's a little hard to take in. If we're talking about making Chertel a four-lane street, then, you know, we're going to have to give some thought to what's visible from Chertel as well, I think. Not sure we're going to be seeing metal buildings from there either.
Well, I mean, as the campus develops, obviously with garages and buildings that have been developed to the entire block envelopes, I think the only exception that you would have is the, what we would consider our temporary community garden. Obviously, the highest and best use for that tract land in the future will probably be a multi-story office building or garage. So what will be created, and Rand can expound on this better than I can, but what we're going to utilize by vacating the streets and alleys that we've done, that we've closed, is really restrict the public access to the development through Chertel. The private access would be on private roads and drives that Chesapeake will own and control that'll serve these interior blocks. So, for example, 60th Street has been closed and will be vacated. Any pavement that's put on 60th Street will be owned by Chesapeake, and they would have the right to gate it or close it or whatever. Contrary to that, as far as access through streets, the two north-south runs, Francis and Lee, which are closed and will be vacated, are intended to be an open 100-foot green space that'll create these open space for walking and pedestrian access throughout the development. So that is part of the campus concept, is to allow these parallel and perpendicular open areas that limit the public's access to the park through a new north-south four-lane road, which will relieve Classen, relieve Western, and our traffic improvements proposed and underway for 63rd and Chertel. And we're in discussions with city staff and ODOT with regard to I-44 Frontage Road and Chertel. And as this campus continues to grow, those things are going to improve and allow that traffic then to be limited to, really, to just Chertel, north-south.
And that's all good. My point was that I don't want to be driving down Chertel and looking at metal buildings. So whether they're blocked by other buildings that you build between Chertel and those metal buildings, or whether they are in some other way transformed, either by, you know, their architecture or ice screening or whatever, I think it probably is something that we don't want, to be driving down Chertel and seeing metal buildings.
And I think we would concur with that, and that would be an opportunity when we come with our specific site plan approval, we can discuss those items as we will discuss traffic impacts and things like that at that time.
Or we can limit the language here, which gives you the opportunity to put metal buildings, say that they won't be visible from, you know, Chertel or 63rd or 57.
Well, when we put our buildings in, we've already said they're going to be east of Lee, right? Okay. I think we'd all agree that Chesapeake does a better job on trees and landscaping than probably anybody else in the city. So when we bring our site plan in, if you don't think we've provided adequate coverage, you have every opportunity to require us to do additional landscaping.
But, Dennis, just for clarity, what would be the, what's the problem with including that language to say no metal buildings? And the type of metal buildings, we're talking about traditional warehouse-type metal buildings, would be visible from either 63rd or Chertel? What would be, what is the problem with that?
The concern I have is, you know, when the final grade elevations are done, the final dirtwork's done, if somebody's driving down 63rd Street and they say, oh, I can see a metal building a mile away, then maybe we're in violation of this PUD, as opposed to us having the opportunity to come in and you all look at a site-specific plan and require whatever requirements you want to in regard to landscaping around the building. I mean, I think that language is just a potential legal problem that's not something I'd recommend Chesapeake undertake.
Can you just clarify for me, if you can, and I know, gosh, big area, conceptual things change. We're all hung up on metal buildings. What do you foresee the use of metal buildings be? The maintenance center, I'm assuming.
I want Mr. Dan Ladon to answer that.
I think in this application, we're asking for metal buildings only east of Lee. If you were to drive Chertel, the elevation changed pretty drastic, and it's difficult to see. These buildings are for the maintenance groups, the central plant, which will cool all of the additional buildings, a records, potential record storage, rock storage building to store core samples and things that we use in the geoscience areas, furniture storage, you know, we've got thousands of offices and need extra desks and chairs. So that's kind of that ancillary area. We also have a maintenance building for the landscape company. It would just be very, extremely expensive to build a brick building for something that houses tractors and mowers and.
No, I understand, but that said, then why can't you restrict the metal buildings to, what I'm looking at, basically it says storage center and central plant, those two?
Well, we're restricting the metal buildings now from the center line of where it says vacant R1 south and east of Lee to the railroad.
Yeah, you're saying east of Lee, but.
These buildings are, they take up the entire block.
No, I understand, but maybe you're already doing what I am suggesting, I just didn't understand, but how far north does your metal building go?
It would go to what we just agreed to, to.
The south boundary of Lot 132 in that picture.
See, that's what I don't understand. I don't understand why that maintenance landscape, can't you switch things around and put something non.
If you were to drive this area right here, this elevation, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, I bet there's a 20 to 25-foot drop.
Big drop.
You can't see it from the highway. I mean, you might see the rooftop, but that's about it. You can't see any of this. So if we're agreeing to no metal building north of this, and this would be a nice brick facade-type glass building, you would never even see this building. And, again, as you go this way, as you head south, the elevation continues to fall to south.
Dramatically between there and 63rd all the way down to 44.
And you really can't see it. If you're driving Chertel, you don't, you don't see any of this.
What are the heights of the building? How tall will they be? How many stories, the metal buildings?
45.
50 feet high.
35.
35 feet. Two-story.
Two-story.
So in essence, you're saying basically the rooftops of those buildings?
You're going to see the rooftops of those buildings. And these aren't typical metal buildings. When you look in an industrial area, you're looking at a metal building. We're looking at something, I wish I had some pictures of some of our field offices. These are award-winning designs by Rand and his team that are in the metal building category that don't look like metal buildings. Yes, it's made from metal, but it's nothing you've ever seen before. So a lot of these buildings also will have some offices, so there'll be some glass incorporated into them. They're not going to be your typical industrial metal building.
I assumed that, that, whatever, I assumed that you would put what they used to call a star building, which is just, you know.
Not like that.
But would it be appropriate to have some sort of restrictions on what kind of metal buildings and put at least a footnote into the PUD?
I'd like to do that at the design stage.
Pardon me?
I'd like to do that at the design stage, not today.
But I think it gets to the point of you've got two square blocks of C-3 with metal buildings.
No, we don't. We can be limited to east of Lee and half of.
You've got a lot of metal buildings. The way that people interpret metal buildings isn't your interpretation or Rand's interpretation. It's really ugly warehouse metal buildings. And couldn't there be some sort of statement in the PUD that this is not what we're talking about being a metal building?
I don't know how to, I don't know how to define that today.
Well, maybe we could work on it.
You know, because we haven't picked the metal to actually put on these buildings yet, so.
But I think, I think that everybody understands that we're not talking about the traditional warehouse metal building, star building, and how you can eliminate that precept or concept or intent from what you're talking about in metal buildings.
I don't know what that language would be.
I don't know what it would be either. I mean, you know, you guys are the sharpest.
Dennis just asked, is there a definition that could be there? I think it would be an architectural project. It is not an industrial-looking project. It has an architectural quality to it. I don't know if there's a better definition than that, but there is a difference between a building and a piece of architecture, and everything that's been done on the campus for Chesapeake for the last 22 years has been a piece of architecture, and we would imagine going forward with it.
That at least helps, you know.
That's just what I asked Mr. Johnson. We've used that term in the past of architectural.
Metal architecture.
And then we've either blessed it or not at the design review stage. So if you could do that, I think that would address.
It's impossible to describe this without saying architectural, but I mean, they would be handsome buildings. I mean, yeah, there you go. Architectural is probably better than handsome.
And Rand, I really do admire a lot of metal buildings that are architecturally appropriate, et cetera. I, you know, and I'd have no doubt that that's going to be. The problem is that when we put our stamp on this, it says metal buildings, and then you don't do it, well, some jerk over here says, well, I can just put up a star building and, you know, that's not what we want. That'd be good.
To Dan's point, that, you know, you'll see those at a point.
Is the garage, is the garage that's on old Classen, is that metal, is that metal skin on the outside of it?
That Classen curve, it's made.
No, not the Classen curve, right on 63rd and Old Classen.
Oh, the parking garage, parking garage 2 is actually a metal.
Is that metal?
That is a metal panel.
That's.
It would be considered, James, an architectural panel, a word that you'd be familiar with. And the difference often, not always, is whether it's corrugated or flat. It's just about the quality of the detail, whether there's an exposed fastener or not. I mean, metal buildings can be detailed beautifully.
My point was, it's a metal building, it has metal.
Yeah, I think the key word is architectural. I think that, hopefully that answers the question.
And believe it or not, I have one final issue I think that we need to raise and at least discuss, and that is the traffic. And I think, you know, the staff report indicates that there's not sufficient information to even sort of give an analysis of the traffic issues and so on. And so this was something that Mr. Johnson and I discussed this morning, and I think it's something that we may need a little input from staff on. But at some point, you know, this additional development is going to generate a lot more traffic than there already is, and there's already a significant amount. So I think we need a little bit of new guidance and discussion about when and where and how and why we're going to resolve some of the traffic issues.
If I may, Stuart and I discussed that just briefly, and what I understand is, one, that there is a traffic impact analysis will be submitted with the first specific plan. But I understand the understanding is with respect to the light at 63rd, is it 63rd and Chertel? That has been agreed. Is that correct? And comes in at the time that we close 61st?
It is actually under design, it'll be built as soon as we can get it approved.
Okay.
Staff has already seen it, we've already done the warrant study, it's been to the Traffic Commission. We're moving forward.
Okay, so the light will be in shortly?
Yes.
Fair to say?
Three months.
Okay. Now then, further analysis, I think as Janice is addressing, she may have already known about that particular thing, but further impact is scheduled to be done when, Tim? Or do you have any, could you?
We'll provide the staff the traffic impact for the next building that comes in for site-specific review. And the reason why the staff and we agreed to that point, because we're not sure which is the next building and where it's going to be. So we could wear the staff out with various analyses, but it'd be better to specifically address as each one comes. We have already provided the city and staff about two years ago an overall master traffic study, of which many of the items are being implemented. Classen from Grand, I'm sorry, Classen, Grand Boulevard from Classen to 63rd is under construction, being widened. The signals are being improved at Classen and Grand to accommodate our traffic study. An additional signal is being installed at north of Whole Foods that will accommodate and upgrade Western to a left turn by into the Whole Foods site and out of the Whole Foods site. Those were all studied as part of the plan that was given to them a couple of years ago. So they're, and I'm stopping because I could go on, but there are probably 10 traffic-related projects that are in process right now relative to that, say, it was done.
Okay.
Well, if nobody has anything further, I just want to say again, I, if we left it to you, I'm sure it would be beautifully well-done, you know, an asset to the city, and no question in my mind about all that. And if there's not anybody else that wants to be heard, I'm going to move approval.
You made visions in the TEs.
I think we got some.
Ah, yes.
I think we need to address just those issues. So you got those?
I do not.
One of which, could I make a comment upon, that you want to delete the TE relating to eight-foot signs, you want 10-foot signs. Based upon the renderings that Rand set around, I have no objection to that at all. I think that they're cool. So that's my comment on that. And then the other ones, no metal buildings on the north side, east of Lee, and at the dividing point where that alleyway.
125, lot known as 125.
Right.
Also the elimination of the outdoor sales and display and, those things that we discussed, I'll tell you, you'll get that all worked out, so.
And then the architectural metal building reference, that that's what the metal buildings will be consisting of, whatever that language is.
And then the final one is the parking.
Parking, yeah, parking.
And when I thanked you earlier about that, I didn't necessarily mean that I was thanking you for applying to code, but just that you're giving it attention. I mean, I realize that it's in your own best interest to make sure that there's sufficient parking there, and whether it's, whether it needs code or whether it's, you know, the 15% less because it's parking in the rear and all that kind of thing. I mean, it's just, I'm glad that you're paying attention. parking there, and whether it's, whether it needs code, or whether it's, you know, the 15% less because it's parking in the rear and all that kind of thing. I'm glad that you're paying attention.
And then the only thing that was kind of left was, there was a question about our ability to have a cell tower.
Right.
We agreed we would make it east of Lee.
East of Lee.
And obviously, you all would.
I need to hold off on that, just because we're waiting on the design from AT&amp;T, and if east of Lee doesn't get us coverage to Classen, it's going to have to move closer in, so.
Will you know that before you go to City Council?
I don't, maybe.
I mean, I'd like to know how tall the thing's going to be.
I'd really, I'd love some idea about the tower.
I'm sorry, I don't know what code is today on cell towers. How high?
Or just leave it in and say, location will come back to us or.
Yeah, location and height.
Location, you know, for.
We have to come back for your permission on the location? That's fine. That would work. No matter what, you all still have the ability to say yes or no, and we will have to show you what we're going to do.
No, cell towers are a conditional use, so not only would they have to meet.
Right, right, come back.
Conditions in the ordinance. If they don't, then they have to come back for special permit, and ultimately, still, they have to come back for a specific plan.
So, the fact that we're including that as a use unit doesn't, doesn't.
Doesn't mean it's my right. It means they have the option if they meet the conditions of the ordinance.
Okay. Got the motion? Did I hear the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
Second.
Motion to approve item nine as conditioned, and second, and catcher votes, that item is approved.
On behalf of Chesapeake, thank you very much. Excellent comments from all of you, including Commissioner Bright.
Okay, item 10 has been continued. Right, Russell? Okay, I think that concludes the public hearing items. Okay, communications and reports, planning commissioner, commission committees. I don't have any things. Is anybody else? Okay, planning commission members. Planning department?
I got a request.
Okay.
And JJ, this is probably directed toward the staff, well, it is directed toward the staff. At I-40 and Post Road, there has been talk of a clover leaf there, or an on-ramp, an off-ramp. If Douglas is ever closed, can we check and make sure, after doing that zoning, the last planning commission, can we check and make sure that we've got, or there is adequate easement and so on and so forth at that location? Okay?
I have a question. Did I just miss this? Did we have this before today?
No.
We need these things before today. I mean, we, we can't have these just.
Edit. We've got a software upgrade that's giving us some.
But we would normally have them.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
The only thing for the planning department, the joint workshop is currently scheduled for May the 3rd, although that is also the date we found out a day ago that, that the budget is supposed to be introduced as well. So, we're not quite sure what's going on with that yet. But I'll let you know.
All right. Development Services Department. Susan? Citizens to be heard? Other business? Want you to adjourn? Okay, that's approved, certainly.